Okay, Mayor, we live.
Thank you. So today is seven, today is February sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two, and the time is seven nineteen P M., and I'm calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Virtual Regular Meeting. City Manager, would you mind meeting us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I'll be happy to, Mayor. Everyone, please look at the mayor's screen there with the flag. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic.
For which it stands.
My nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. City Clerk, can I have your roll call, please?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Alejandra Avila. Here. Councilmember Monica Garcia. I believe she was not going to be able to attend the meeting. Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pretend Daniel Damian.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estada.
Here. And then so.
And I'm here.
Oh, yes, and don't.
Oh, Marie, I'm sorry. Did we want to excuse Councilman Garcia?
Yes, I'll make a motion to excuse Councilmember Garcia. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? And I believe we haven't recessed. I mean, we haven't adjourned from closed session, but city attorney, is there anything to report out?
I'm sorry, thank you. No, Mr. Mayor, we've not reported out, we've not finished our closed session, and therefore we have not anything to report out at this time.
Great. And so at this moment, I will make an announcement. The City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening, and each council member is paid an additional stipend of thirty dollars for attending the Housing Authority meeting and fifty dollars for attending the Finance Authority meeting. We will now move on to our presentation, and that is a cannabis program presentation presented by Benjamin Martinez, Director of Community Development and H D L Companies.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm happy to present Mr. Mark Lovelace and David McPherson of the H D L Companies Cannabis Division. The H D L Company has a very long history in working with city governments going back multiple decades. The city of Baldwin Park has enjoyed a good business relationship. They're the company that monitors and tracks our sales tax and property tax revenues. This is how the company was born, and then they have branched into other areas, including cannabis. They are, they are experts in cannabis, and we, we met with them over the past several, couple of weeks and months. And under the city manager's authority, we contracted them to begin to, you know, talk about our cannabis program. I'm going to present Mr. Mark Lovelace to, to, to talk more about the company and how they can fit in, in, in our team, along with our legal advisors and our staff. But these, these folks are the experts in California when it comes to cannabis, having represented over one hundred and seventy-five cities and counties in developing cannabis programs. They do audits and inspections, and they've reviewed over thirty-five hundred cannabis business applications. So they've seen it all, they know the trends. They, they represent multiple governments, they only represent governments, they do not represent the private sector, only governments, which is very key. And I'm, I'm happy to present them tonight or to introduce them. So, Mr. Lovelace, if you could begin your presentation, thank you.
Thank you, and it's nice to be here, and hello to all of the members of the council. My name is Mark Lovelace. I'm a Senior Policy Advisor with H D L Companies with our Cannabis Management Team. And I'm here tonight just to provide an overview and introduction to H D L, our team and the services that we provide, along with an outline of the services that we've been requested to provide to the city. By way of introduction, for myself, I am a former Humboldt County Supervisor, was on the Board, Board of Supervisors in Humboldt for two terms, eight years during a very active time as we're, as legalization of cannabis was first on the horizon and then became a reality with propositions with Mount Purse first off, and then with Proposition sixty-four, and helped to develop our regulatory program and tax program here in Humboldt. So can we go to the next slide, please? So about H D L, just a little bit of background, as Ben noted. Hinderliner, Delamas, and Associates, Associates are H D L were originally founded in nineteen eighty-three. We provide a variety of tax auditing, compliance, economic development, consulting services to local governments in California, and we've expanded now to five states around the country. Among the services that we provide are sales tax auditing, transaction use tax auditing, property tax, transient occupancy taxes, cannabis taxes. We provide a wide range of services for all of these different kinds of taxes the counties and cities have to deal with to ensure that the revenues that each client, county or city deserves are being, are being generated. Make sure that you're getting all of the revenue that should be coming your way. H D L currently serves over five hundred cities and counties across five states. And would also like to note that H D L is a one hundred percent employee-owned company. Next slide, please. We established our cannabis division in two thousand and sixteen, and that was the product of David McPherson, our Compliance Director, who is also here in the meeting. Since then, our cannabis team is assembled a team that has over sixty-five years combined experience. And I'll go through some of our key team members in just a minute here. Since that time, we have assisted over one hundred and seventy-five California cities and counties in developing their cannabis programs, including regulatory ordinances, tax ordinances, the actual implementation of those regulations, enforcement, a lot of monitoring, just full range of services that we'll run through here. Of that, we've conducted over eighteen thousand audits and inspections of cannabis businesses. Our team members have that experience. We've reviewed over thirty-five hundred cannabis business applications. And as noted, H D L works solely with public agencies. We have no private sector clients in cannabis industry or in any other industry. We work for you, county or the city specifically, and make sure that we have no conflicts regarding that. Next slide, please. So our cannabis management team, just to introduce the four primary key members here. David McPherson, our Compliance Director, who's credited with initiating and developing this team. He was former Revenue and Tax Administrator for the city of Oakland, developed the first Prop sixty-four compliant regulatory program in the state. He has, since his time with H D L, he has developed eighty-four of the hundred and twenty-one successful cannabis tax measures in California. So he has a tremendous experience developing tax programs, counties and cities. He is also recognized as leading expert in California cannabis policies and regulations. And he also has experience prior, you know, along with his experience with the city of Oakland, David also has past experience working for the city of San Jose with Orange County and has a background in law enforcement. Matt Eaton is our Deputy Compliance Director and heads up the compliance program for H D L, the compliance inspections primarily, and also with the application reviews that we do for our clients. Matt, as noted here, is a former investigator with Colorado's Marijuana Enforcement Division. He's conducted over ten thousand investigations and compliance inspections through his many, many years of service and experience. He helped to develop Colorado's regulatory protocols for enacting and making their their cannabis program workable. You know, there's a lot that goes on between the development of the legislation and the actual implementation of it, and Matt had a key role in that. He's also responsible for reviewing over thirty-five hundred cannabis business applications in his time with H D L. Next slide, please. A J Calori is our Deputy Audit Policy Director, is formerly the Assistant Manager for the city of Long Beach, and was responsible for the oversight of that city's cannabis management program. And in that role, he managed over two hundred cannabis licenses and oversaw revenues of ten million dollars annually for the city. And myself, as noted, Senior Policy Advisor for H D L, former Supervisor of Humboldt County. The work that I do for H D L is primarily providing market analysis and revenue projections. And in doing that, I've conducted economic impact analyses for over thirty counties and cities in California to help them get a good perspective of what, what a cannabis program could look like in their county or city, what kinds of revenues they might expect, what parts of the industry might be strong points for them. And we also have twelve additional staff, five, including five auditors, four inspectors, three and three business application reviewers to round out our team. So all told, we've got a nineteen member, excuse me, seventeen-member team that that you will have working for you. Next slide, please. So the scope of services that we have been hired to provide for the city include, first off, fiscal analysis of your development agreement fees, and this is a step to ensure that the development agreement fees that you have been collecting have been properly tracked and positive separate funds and that all of the requirements of Government Code Section sixty-six double oh six that oversees development agreements in California have been properly followed and tracked. So that's kind of a retrospective, looking backwards at how the city has managed this development agreement fees. We also have been hired to review and evaluate the city's public benefit fees, and that's a portion of the development fees that is dedicated to providing specified public benefits as negotiated with the city between the applicants and the city. And as part of that, to help to determine what those fees, whether they're reasonable and appropriate and proportionately gross receipts of the cannabis business to ensure that they're competitive and aren't being any sort of an impediment to the success of those businesses. Because, of course, to generate revenue from cannabis businesses, you have to ensure that those businesses are successful. We also, as part of that, will be comparing the fees with the fees or taxes imposed by other nearby jurisdictions and averages around the state. Will be analyzing any changes that the city may be proposing or considering, and will provide recommendations to guide and inform any potential changes to the development agreement fees as the city moves forward. Along with these, these are kind of the primary services that we have been engaged to assist the city with. We'll also be providing application reviews, helping the city with reviewing applications for additional cannabis businesses as they come forward, make sure that they've addressed all the requirements of the city's municipal code. We will be conducting pre-licensed site inspections, and this is a matter of going out on site when the business has been approved or licensed, but they still have to get all of their permits, all of their entitlements in place. And the last step is a walk-through of the site to make sure that everything's in order, and our role in that is to ensure that all of the cannabis-specific aspects of the build-out of that site have been addressed correctly, the security cameras, the limited access areas, all of the things that are necessary to ensure that they're complying with the cannabis requirements from the city and the state. We will be providing regulatory compliance inspections. These are after the businesses are up and running, going out once a year to engage with the business, inspect it, make sure that they're following the protocols and requirements of the city's code in practice. And as part of this service, this ends up being kind of a collaborative service because the tremendous experience that our inspectors bring to this means that they're just a walking fountain of knowledge that they can exchange and help with those businesses to not only ensure that they're complying with law, but help them find the most efficient and effective ways to comply with law. And lastly, we will also be providing general subject matter expertise and technical assistance for the city on any other cannabis-related matters that may come up, so that we're available to you for anything, any questions, any, anything that arises that may be outside of this scope of services. We're here for you, and we can provide whatever assistance you may need. Additional services, can we move to the next slide? Additional services that we offer, we also do cannabis revenue audits. This is services we provide for a lot of our clients, and that's to ensure that the revenue that's being reported to the local jurisdiction, reported and remitted is accurate, and so that the so that the reporting that they're providing and the taxes that they're paying for fees are as, as required and that they're meeting all the terms of their, their business permit or of their development agreements. We also provide supplemental background checks. This is something that expands upon the regular live scan that is required as part of the state licensing to look at other things that may be of interest to the city to ensure that along with the look for certain felony red flags that are required as a live scan, we also look for things such as financial malfeasance or fraud or lack of payment on obligations, things that, again, might be informative to the city and helpful in making decisions regarding permitting and licensing. And we also can provide compliance training for city staff. Many cities like to have their staff involved in the compliance inspection aspect and need a little assistance in understanding how to develop those programs, how to staff up for it, and what exactly they need to do to conduct those inspections. So these are the services that we provide. We move to the next slide. That's pretty much my presentation here for tonight. We've only been engaged recently for the city, so we're looking forward to conducting this work. We've had a fair amount of engagement already about some of the services that we'll be providing, and with that, we'd open up to any questions that you may have.
David, I just want to dig Mr. McPherson, just give a few comments, if he's still with us, and his preliminary thoughts on just where the city stands generally in our progress.
Thank you, Ben. Good evening again, Council Mayor and Council David McPherson. So in talking to staff, you know, one of the things that we recognize, and I think what's unique and important, kind of this relationship, is that we've been in your shoes. I, as Mark had indicated, I was not in the state and the country. I was the first person in the country to tax and regulate the industry when I was Oakland, and I had no one to look for. There was no state regulations. We started co-op and collectives. There was no directions. In fact, we had to work with the state in developing stuff, so, you know, kind of being in those shoes of understanding as you start new, now you know, a new industry that's new to us as a whole, something new to everything. But really, what does it mean as we've evolved through a co-op collective world to a gray area to implement the development of state regulations that continue to evolve and change literally every three months for ninety days, there's been changes that, and, and as you brought your program up, you know, you were at a point in time of where you felt good about where you were going with it at that snapshot in time when you rang the bell and kept your program off. And here we are today, learning some of the challenges that you had, some of the logistics, some of the transit impacts of the businesses, both from them being successful and sustainable, but also some of the moving parts that affected you in developing your program. So what I just want to share with you is that we have a team that are first movers on the regulatory government side from three states, as we mentioned, Colorado, Nevada, and California. And because of the volume we've done, you're going to get the benefits of all the other intel and information and lessons learned from clients and from us and the regulators that we've had to go through to evolve where we are. And so as we examine your program and as I shared with Ben, is the first thing that's important is really getting assessment of the businesses and understanding dynamics before saying something's good, something's bad, or what would be a good improvement and value added in order to make sure your businesses are successful, sustainable, accountable, and then anything that's oversight to them is reasonable, so that it is a cooperative experience for everyone involved. So with that, I appreciate your time and look forward to working with your team.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I just close that, it's a big, well, big company, a lot of services, a lot of expertise, and we're just kicking off with them. You know, we're, we're getting to know each other. And I think they, I think this is the folks that can help round out the team and, and help guide us in the future, and if there's any questions, thank you.
Thank you for that, Ben. So no questions on my side, I just definitely, you know, one of the, I think one of the reasons we, we consider this is because we're, we're looking to make sure that, you know, the systems here at City Hall are, are, you know, are transparent and safe for everybody and, and overall helpful, not just for the operators, but also for our staff. You know, we want to make sure that staff has the helping hands that they need and, and also that the operators have the, you know, the accessibility to wherever they need to get things going, and so that there's a better communication between both sides. And overall, just a, we're, we're trying to make something that's efficient and efficient for, for both ends of the, of the, of the line. So I don't know if any council members have any questions, concerns?
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ben, for bringing them on board and bringing us this presentation. I think we all came on board and started this cannabis without any knowledge of really what we were getting into. And you know, Ben, it's been a lot of work, a lot of trial and error, and so I think we need, we need experts to, to guide us and help us. And like the mayor said, not just the staff, but also our operators to make sure that everything's running smoothly, that we get the inspected, the needed inspections and all the services that they provide. So thank you for that presentation, Ben. Thank you, Mr. Lovelace. Am I saying it correctly?
Lovelace.
Lovely, sorry. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, thank you, Mark. I really appreciate this presentation, and more importantly, the services in which you'll be providing to the city. You know, I think what it comes with is the experience, but also the knowledge that you can lend yourself to our city staff and be able to move, more importantly, more transparent. So that's, that's the biggest piece for, for, for myself. So, you know, it bifurcates some of the work that our city staff is doing with these, with these individuals. And I fully support, you know, your, your position of not taking on clients that are not a non-government entity. Again, that brings, that brings back to the credibility and support. I think we've all been looking, and we're certainly glad you're on board, so thank you.
Thank you. So if there is no more comments at this time, I, I want to thank you for being here with us. At this moment, we will, will move to open public communications, and then Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have three speakers. We have Mr. Tuttle, Mr. Reels, and Catherine Lozier. I will try Mr. Tuttle first one moment.
Hello?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Tuttle. This is Lulu again calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. Three minutes.
Three hours? Okay, I'll take three hours.
My apologies, three minutes. Your time starts once you speak.
Good evening, Council. First of all, in the special meeting at the very end, I came to conclusion that we've told you all along, and all these people that cook on the sidewalks will never have a license and be operated in the city. So just like before, we should have done this a long time ago. I just hope this is done efficiently and get it over with and get these vendors off the sidewalk. Now, on to the next thing is the sales tax increase that you're wanting to do and have the people vote in. There's no, I talked to the county and I've talked to several other people. There's no county thing trying to go and going to take this tax away that if you get it increased. The sales tax has to be voted in by the residents. If the residents vote, voted in, you don't increase it. The thing is, if you increase the sales tax, that talks to increasing the sales tax on a car, electric bills, gas bills, going to the grocery store, restaurants, you name it. It's going to affect businesses and residents all in this city. And only because, the reason you had to do this was because your corrupt and still-employed city attorney messed up all the weed contracts and never got the weed contracts corrected right so that we could start getting revenue into the city. And I'm glad to see that this company is coming on board to educate the city and do it the right way. And this is the way it should have been done to begin with, but you guys were not the start of this whole thing. There was another council at that time. But this sales tax increase of you coming in, hiring this slick firm to come in and make slick things, saying we're going to put it into the general fund, and we're going to give it to the, the Parks and Rec, we're going to do all this stuff. Manny Carillo's got millions of dollars over there at that Parks and Records through grants. He doesn't need that money. He also gets it from developers that puts in new apartment buildings, homes, and all that other stuff. We need to understand that the sales tax doesn't get increased and slick words at the end of September trying to tell voters that they need to vote in and spend more of their money is not right. You're sitting there trying to save them money on the rent that they're not even paying rent increases, and the landlords are suffering and everything else. And here you're wanting to take from the poor again and pay more sales tax because your mismanagement of the weed money. The weed money would cover all this when it's done efficiently. And it would cover all the money that the city needs to pay off all the lawsuits that this city attorney has incurred. So I suggest to you, you drop this thing before you spend any more money on this firm to come in with some slick advertising to, please increase our sales tax because we're stupid. We don't understand that we're going to pay more money, and the city's going to piss it away in the general fund. Just like they did the fifty thousand for the police department, and the police never got any money of that from the weed people.
Thank you, Mr. Tuttle.
I suggest, I suggest that you guys stop the sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Mr. Reels. One moment.
Hello?
Hi, good afternoon, Mr. Reels. This is Lulu calling you from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your request to speak in the regular session of the City Council meeting. You have three minutes, and your time begins once you start speaking.
Thank you. Like I said earlier, you know, I do have pictures of everything. You know, if something does happen, you know, they can always contact me, and I have all the pictures of all the violations that the three vendors have, okay? But other than that, I just want to talk some positive. I've been I've been talking to the CEO and to Anthony, trying to keep our city clean. Anthony and his group has done a beautiful job. They've been going around picking up all the trash that people just throw out in the city of Baldwin Park. Plus, there's some areas which I mentioned to Anthony that they took down the signs of no parking. And it's right there in the Dow with apartment, that area. And the cops, they did come on Thursday, but other than that, I haven't seen them in the past, I would say five days, you know? And there's still parking right there at the red zones and everything. We need to have the police department do some more drive-bys in, in our community. I don't know what has happened, but they're just lack, lack of police force. And one, and one part of it is that the community don't trust the police department, which is bad. We had a really tight police department that people would call them up and they would respond. But lately, we've been having a lot of problems. They call up and and a lot of times they come, they tell me, they say, why call the cops? They're not gonna do anything. And it's bad. It's getting that bad that, you know, we need to do. Oh, I don't know if the chief can do it or get somebody else to do it. But it is bad. So I just want to put that out in the front and, you know, like I said, Anthony and his group is doing a beautiful job, you know? And the stuff that they were broken and stuff, I get Anthony's and his group is doing, like I said, beautiful. All the trash that the vendors, street vendors are leaving, you know? Anthony's group has to go out and clean it up. So other than that, you know, thank you for the time and you guys have a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Reels.
Okay.
The next caller is Catherine Lozier. One moment.
Hello?
Hi, Catherine. This is Lulu calling you from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your request to speak at the regular session. Your time starts when you begin speaking. Go ahead.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, community partners and fellow committee members. Thank you for this opportunity to speak. It is a pleasure tonight to announce that our in-person programming will resume at the LA County Libraries beginning the week of February 28th. At Baldwin Park Library, our Smarty Cat Storytime will resume on Thursday, March 3rd. It's a four-week series for preschool children ages two to five with their parents. And there'll be books, songs, rhymes, movements while learning school readiness skills and having fun. And it is, space is very limited, so advanced registration is required. And registration will open one week prior to the event, which would be February 24th at 11:00 AM. And we do still have a virtual programming for those who are not able to participate in person. So for those who are interested in Smarty Pants Storytime, that would be available on Friday, Fridays at 11 o'clock. And we do, we will still have both in-person and virtual programming. And all of our events can be found online at lacountylibrary.org/virtualprogramming. Thank you so much for, for the time this evening and I hope you have a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Mayor, that concludes our public speakers.
Great. Thank you. So at this moment, I will move to close public communication. And we have a consent calendar. So is there any items that council is looking to pull?
I'm sorry, Mayor, it's Ben, Ben. I did want to note that there's a typo on number 10. The grant that we are receiving from the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust is for 1,250,000, not 1,125,000 as stated in the report. So as a typo, just to note that change.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I could pull seven?
Great. And then I will pull item number nine and 10. Is there any other items? If not, at this moment, I will make a motion to pass the consent calendar. Consent calendar items number one through 14 excluding items number seven, nine and 10. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? Or you know what, City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila? Yes. Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Yes.
Thank you for that. And then Councilmember Hernandez, you have the floor with item number seven.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I just want to be able to add for consideration for all of us is to add to the class specs that are in the report for both of them. The verbiage that says for police captain, lieutenant and sergeant that they align also that the, the college degree is, is an accredited recognized institution. There are several accreditations and that's, those are, those are all fine. But I just want to make sure that we're accepting degrees that are from accredited institutions. And I'll, you know, I believe the chief is, is fine with that recommendation.
Yes, sir.
So that is my motion at the same time.
I will second your motion. Hey, City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Yes.
Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And so we move on to item number nine, and I think we have, uh, we do have the, the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity team here with us today.
Yes.
Great. And then, so Ben, I think, and then just double check, I did see, I think I looked through the, through the agreement, but it was, some of the numbers were left blank. So we have to decide how many, what percentage goes where? Is there, is there a recommended amount of money to go towards acquisition rehab and then the rest towards rehab of low-income homeowners?
Yes, Mayor. The, the city council did authorize back in October of last year, the funding of 3.5 million approximately to go to Habitat for a number of programs, including acquisition rehab. So tonight's action is just to approve the form of the agreements that Habitat will use, utilize when they pursue the, to, when they pursue the purchase of, of a property for acquisition rehab. As we know, the real estate market is extremely competitive. I was talking to Grant Power of Habitat earlier today and they were looking at a property in our city and a dilapidated property and it had 16 offers and all the offers were $70,000 over the asking price. So just gives you an idea of what's going on out there. So the purpose of the, of the, of these approval, these documents is that they can act quickly. And we would, the city manager would be authorized to, you know, execute the agreements without council approval because he would have approved the form of the agreements. If there is time, though, we would bring back the particular acquisition project, you know, for council approval, but this would allow us to move more quickly.
Okay, I think that's fine. I just wanted to double check. And then so real quick, I know that you know, 3.5 doesn't sound like a lot, but from my understanding, you know, it'll get, you know, it leverages some of Habitat's funds and we actually to purchase more housing than we think we are. Is that correct, Grant?
Yes, it is.
Do you have an estimate of how many homes we could potentially acquire or a rough estimate of how many homeownership opportunities we'll be able to create?
While it's difficult to estimate precisely, we think we can produce somewhere between 30 and 40 homeownership opportunities from these funds in addition to providing perhaps two or three dozen home repair or owner occupied repair projects that would, in the end, enable people to stay and stay in place or preserve their, their housing.
Great. That's really, that's really, that's a, the higher is a lot, the higher, the number is a lot higher than I thought it would. So I'm very excited for that. I know, um, you know, every time we share about, about Torch Street, a lot of the, a lot of the community members do get excited and they, they ask about how they can sign up for that. So I want to make sure that we, we can share with them, you know, the, the big progress we're doing on a lot of these projects.
Thank you. We're, we're very excited to move forward. We're already looking actively for opportunities in acquisition rehabilitation of, of new properties or of existing properties in, in Baldwin Park. And we have, we're looking at the possibility of new construction for 15 new units on a single property that is in addition to Torch Street based on this new allocation.
Great. And then so just, I, I've been reading a lot. So your, your biggest project to date is 16 units, I believe, right? And that's in somewhere in San Gabriel?
We have a, a large project that was 18 units. That was several, several years ago. And that was our largest. But right now Torch Street is at the top of, in terms of the size of project that we're working on. Nice. With 12.
Great. Well, I'm definitely looking forward to making the next goal, building the biggest project you have here in Baldwin Park.
Thank you. We look forward to working on that and we'll continue our search. And we'd like to do this very much in collaboration with the city. With staff providing new addresses or opportunities that we may otherwise not see.
Of course. We'll definitely make sure we do that. So thank you, Grant, for being here.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make a motion to pass item number nine. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And so item number 10 is a consideration of an agreement between the city of Baldwin Park and the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust to provide homeless housing and related services for homeless families at 13167 Garvey Avenue. And then I see that we do have Brielle with us and then we have Ben and Sam and I think any other staff that might be involved in this project. So you know, we've, we've been able to acquire a 1.25 million dollar grant solely for the construction, if I'm not mistaken. And so I want to make sure that we that we're able to move fast on this, you know, potentially being able to open, open up at least the family portion for the school year so that, you know, any children that are facing housing insecurity are able to start the school year in a stable place. And so I think we have Brielle here. So Brielle, can you kind of talk to us about how we can spend these dollars or how we can achieve that?
Sure. So I would just add that the board requested that the funding is primarily spent on construction, but if there are operational fees or if there's room in the budget, we are also able to support operational fees. So the award was contingent on producing 50 beds of homeless housing. So it's an award of $25,000 per bed of homeless housing. And the San Gabriel Valley Regional Housing Trust and the, the COG staff are available to assist with technical assistance. So we will be providing architectural assistance, the same firm that helped us put together Baldwin Park Tiny Homes Espronsevia will be available to help with site design and making sure that this is a, a really well thought out project. And we're here to assist in any way we can.
Great. And then so just to clarify, we are having that overnight parking in a couple of months. And then so we're using that same site. So we could potentially use some of these funds to buy the infrastructure that as long as it's being used at the end for the final project, which is the tiny homes, correct? So like we were talking about potential showers, et cetera.
Yes. So we can, we could start infrastructure expenses as soon as the MOA is executed. I believe Ben noted in the report that we have it as 25% available immediately.
Great. Okay. And then, and then I think Sam was saying that he could also help with procurement. So Sam, in order for you to be able to expedite procurement of, of, of infrastructural needs and other equipment, what would you need from the council?
So approval of this item would be the first order of business. And then after that, I would work with Ben, Manny and Brielle on the logistics. And then we can start the procurement of, you know, whatever the design is going to be and the number of units and, and whatnot.
Great. Okay. So, and then I know that we, so before you were able to spend a certain amount of money before, without it coming to council approval, we didn't, I don't think we formally ever changed that. So you could potentially do that with these funds?
That is correct.
Okay. You know, just based on the, you know, on the, on the matter, I think being an urgent one, you know, I would, I would like to give you direction to do so if the other council members feel comfortable with that.
Yes.
Great. So I think that's clear direction. Didn't hear any no's. I will make a motion to pass number 10 with, with the added direction. Can I get a second?
Second.
City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Really quick, I just want to add that I am looking forward to this project and especially if we can get, get it going before the new school year starts. As I always said, there's a lot of families that don't have a place to sleep and they look and they search for, for, for a hand down just to get a night's hotel. And it means a lot to me to be able to finally bring something to our city that will be helping our families that, that are not so lucky like the rest of us and that we're going to be able to make a difference for those children. I can't wait to see the smiles on their faces. Thank you, Brielle, for all the work you do. You are amazing. I love it. I love your energy and your knowledge when it comes to helping those that are in need. So I'm look, I'm really looking forward to this new project.
Thank you. We're so grateful for this partnership with the city.
Thank you. So thank you, Brielle, and then Councilmember Avila for your comments. I do think, you know, this is the first time I've heard of anybody potentially using the expanded tiny home size and, and getting creative on how we can help families. So it would be a first, not just in the San Gabriel, not just in Baldwin Park, but in the San Gabriel Valley and potentially in the region. So, you know, we keep kind of, we'll keep breaking barriers and, and being a, an adamant, you know, supporter of, of fighting housing insecurity here in Baldwin Park. So thank you for that. And so I believe we are at city council acting as successor agency of the Salt Community Development Commission. I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? City Clerk, roll call please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damien?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. Thank you for that. And then we have a public hearing, which is for fiscal year 2022-23 Annual Action Plan Housing and Community Development Needs and Priorities Public Hearing. So I will officially open the public hearing. Chief Deputy City, is there anybody looking to speak during the public hearing?
No, Mayor, we don't have any speakers for the public hearing.
Great. So at this moment, I will officially close the public hearing. And I will make a motion to
Sir Mayor, before we do that, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Just have quick questions. Ben or Carol, can you just share with us, at what point do we actually begin to see the allocation of the money tied to each of these priorities? When do we, when do we approve that?
Thank, thank you, Mayor, Council. So tonight is the beginning of the process. HUD requires a public hearing be held before we do anything. So that's why usually all cities have this public hearing and there's not much to talk about or say because we haven't presented anything. So then the next step will be a 30-day review period while we develop essentially the plan and the budget. That'll be through March 16th and May 4th. And then we will bring back the budget, the plan in, in, in May for consideration by the council. That's, so that's when you will, you know, begin to see, you know, the, the potential allocation. um you know, begin to see, you know, the the potential allocations after we've discussed this with city manager, the other, all the department heads. Um we also have a new housing commission. Um and so that's a new new uh commission that we we did not have before. So we we plan to involve them in in the process as well. We haven't quite thought that that out completely because it's new, but we will, we plan to do that.
Okay. So after that period of time is when they'll come back after their recommendations and and uh input, uh we'll receive what those final allocation numbers are.
Correct.
Okay. Um and there's still opportunities for uh other nonprofit organizations to submit proposals uh during this period of time. And if so, uh where would they do that?
Uh yes, the applications are online or they may con, they can contact our department. The applications are available for public services or developers that want to present um housing proposals or or the like. So um we we do, we are accepting proposals. I'm trying to find the date that we saw several weeks, so that closes. So um we, there is time.
Excellent. Um one other item, if I can, um under priority number six, which is, I believe, the second to last page. Uh right now, it says, you know, provide public services for residents with special needs and then goals, special needs services. Uh the way it reads, uh is this with people? Uh what do you mean by the the terminology of special needs? Can you just clarify that? Because
Well, I I think it's a broad definition. It could involve victims of domestic violence. It could uh provide, it could be for families or vic uh uh individuals with uh mental illness and so forth. So it's it's a very broad category. It looks like, you know, we we have funded in the past uh domestic violence services and and assisted the uh Y W C A. Um but other entities and organizations providing special needs could apply for funding.
Okay, um I would just change, if if we can, the the term special needs is is a bit outdated um for some of those communities that you just talked about. Uh the more recognized and a and accepted term is uh people with people with disabilities, uh comma, uh access and functional needs. Or functional need, excuse me. Uh so if we can just make that uh notable uh change, that'd be great. Um Mr. Mayor, if you, if uh as you're about to make your motion. Uh and then also, if we can just uh certainly reach out with some of those nonprofit organizations in the San Gabriel Valley, uh encourage them to apply for some of these funds um and provide those type of programs in addition to the uh, you know, domestic violence uh advocate, uh you know, services from uh San Gabriel uh S G S G Y. Um but also for uh some of our youth. As you know, uh we have a park uh that we've, that we're making it more accessible um for their youth. Uh so we might as well also piggyback uh some of the grant funds uh to support some of those uh opportunities uh for our uh youth here in our community. And individuals, of course.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that's all. If you want to capture that in your motion.
Great. So how about I make a motion? So I'll make a motion to pass fiscal year item number fifteen. Uh we've conducted a public hearing. Any comments made? We have all of our comments. There was no residents. Uh so I will make a motion. And then I believe I have to read the item title. So just to be safe, uh so I'll pass, so I'll pass. So I'll make a motion to pass item number fifteen, fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty 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 two, twenty three, annual action plan, housing and community development needs and priorities public hearing uh with uh the added uh changes by Councilmember Hernandez uh to the titles and the efforts to uh increase our um increase our efforts to uh contact these uh nonprofits so that they can also apply for this available funding. And that is a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
Right. I I hope I didn't butcher your your direction.
No, I I think you got it. And I think uh staff understands where we're going with that.
All right, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Hey, thank you for that. Um and let's see, so we finished that. And now I believe we are down to our reports of officers. And that is our consideration of ordinance of the city of Baldwin Park to establish campaign contribution limits and penalties in Baldwin Park. Uh so uh city attorney, Robert, I don't know if you want to quickly touch on it and let us know uh some of the changes that were made.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. Uh as you know, we've taken up this item um in a prior city council meeting and I received direction to make some changes as it related to the ordinance. Um some of the um major changes that I made um related to uh loan uh limits. Um I also instituted um at the direction of the council uh some uh window periods from which uh donations can be made. Uh I also um uh at the direction of council um uh tighten up some language as it relates to what elections this applies to. So that it would only be the city of Baldwin Park elections for mayor, for city council members, uh treasurer and for city clerk. So I expressly, I believe, excluded uh any other elections such as a school board, um a water board, uh things of that nature. Um also added some additional language as it related to developers and vendors to make that more clear. Um and then uh finally, uh we added some things to the enforcement for violations uh to make sure that there was sufficient teeth. We increased the fines uh from a dollar amount to um I believe it was uh up to three times the amount of the illegal contribution. Um and we also changed some language as it related to the enforcement by the F P P C. Um and then I added a new section as it related to loans, four zero point one one. Um and uh I and I also added a section regarding aggregation of payments, section four zero point one two uh to make it clear that um if you were aggregating payments, it was still held within that limit. And then finally, uh we also added a section related to political action committees and or independent expenditure so that uh any independent expenditures would be identified and any political action committees would also have to be identified uh as well. Uh that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you for that. And then so I believe um and then do we have a statute of limitations on on those fines?
Um I don't believe there's a statute of limitation uh provisions specifically in here. Um uh we could add that um uh as well, uh or we we could add it uh from the dice here, uh if uh if you like. Um um the violations themselves would have to be identified, of course. Um and uh if you wanted to put a statute of limitations on it, um we could add, you know, something like within twelve months from uh the date of the violation. Um with no statute of limitations, of course, then you could bring that uh you could bring that claim and that violation at any time.
Great. Um well, I think I think it might be recommended to add the uh statute of limitations and we do something like uh the full term or two terms. Something that's with everybody.
Yeah, I'm I'm fine with one full term, four years. That's fine.
Great. And then so I know that we didn't have uh contribution limits before. Uh so one of the things that we have to talk about is a contribution received from uh the sources before they became restricted, uh the amounts of the amount, the dollar amount.
I'm sorry, Mayor, going back to uh the full term or four years, we would need to specify because of mayoral term is two. One term is two years and uh for council, city treasurer, city clerk, it's four years. So you'd like, if you'd like to specify whether we're doing four years, two years.
So I would, so we would just do four years.
Um are you, are you talking about uh doing the enforcement, the forty point oh nine point oh two, Mayor?
Statute of limitations, putting in time because uh which makes sense, right? Because then that means that the mayor could get away after two years, right? We don't want to do that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh so I've got wording here uh as a sample. I don't know if maybe this is a word, Robert. Uh it's got prosecution for of any provisions of this section or prosecution of any provision of this chapter should be commenced within four years after the date on which the conviction, the violation occurred. Is that what you want to add, Mayor?
Yes.
Uh that is sufficient language. Let's add that as section four zero point one five. Statute of limitations.
And then so did we, did we make it a requirement for independent expenditures uh and packs to get uh to register with the city?
Um yes, let me uh let me get that for you, Mr. Mayor. Uh any political action committee is defined herein must file documents, city clerk identifying the political action committee and identifying the F P P C number of the P eight pack before any monies may be expended by the pack in any city of Baldwin Park election defined in four zero point oh two H.
Great. Good, okay. So that would, so just to cut that, sorry, that means uh any independent expenditure regardless of amount?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
And the language we use here is any person who makes any independent expenditure. So that would be regardless of amount.
Great. And then so for uh contribution received, because we didn't have the limits before, now that we do, uh you know, we don't want to make it seem like there's a uh, you know, people have the head start. So I think we should consider uh a recusal after a certain amount of dollars have been if a certain amount of dollars has been uh received from from uh from anybody. Also, just because I think we are allowing con uh developers to also uh fund uh, we're allowing, I think, uh candidates to take money from developers. Is that correct?
Um yes, during certain time periods. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so I would, I would add that that we can, uh you know, if anybody received more than seven hundred and fifty dollars then they'd have to recuse themselves on that vote. Does that make sense?
I I thought that we were, I thought that we were not allowing any campaign contributions from any developer or independent contractor that is currently doing, that is currently doing business with the city or applied to do business with the city. So that shouldn't pertain here, correct, Robert?
That that is correct. So i- i- any developer that's currently doing business or currently has anything before the city is barred completely. If they are not doing business and they do not have something before the city, then they're, then developers can uh contribute uh in a uh in a certain time period.
Got it. Okay. Oh, so but there there might have been, there might be, so uh based on timelines, we're barely putting this in. So any developers that might have a, any developer, any contractor that might have a, it's made an expenditure above seven hundred and fifty dollars. That's what I'm talking about. Does that make sense?
But that would only, it it does it because I think it's already covered under the current language that uh Robert has put in there, I I believe.
So the, so this is how to address uh contributions from restricted sources before they became restricted is what I'm saying. So there's a developer.
I I mean, at that point, if they're restricted and if they're asking money, well.
Well, you wouldn't know. So it's money that they've already given before this. So how do we mitigate that is my question.
Why is it such a big issue? I mean, is
I wouldn't think so.
floated around right now?
Well, I don't think there's money being floated around right now, but there's money being floated around in the past, right? And so you know, at the end of the day, if people have received thousands, thousands of dollars in contributions in the past, it's gonna, I think it's gonna make a difference when we're voting on this. And there was only one person that was able to donate at some point money to that campaign because they were able to donate before this was started. Uh so that's, that's also one of my concerns. So I would, I would think that recusal after a seven hundred and fifty one is uh more than fair.
So so that I understand correctly, are you referring to any?
So like let's say we have a, we have a contractor now and they might have donated thousands of dollars in the past. They, you know, if we don't do something to mitigate that and the later on, it might have the appearance of them having a head start because they were able to donate those thousands of dollars before this ordinance came into place.
And so you want to put a timeline as to the date that they received it from the last time that they received the contribution from this developer?
You could put a timeline. I mean, you have to recuse yourself at least for a couple of of years. We just took a, you know, if you just took a donation from them a year or two years ago.
So in example, in example, uh council member A received a one thousand dollar contribution from developer A a year ago. Council member A is not allowed to vote on a certain item that that developer is bringing up to the council now?
Yeah.
You might have problems with having enough people to vote on a particular item if they've given money to X amount of council members, you know, A, B, or C in the past, that did not have any money or did not have any projects uh at the time.
Yeah, so
How do you resolve that?
So Robert, if if there's a recusal thing in here and there's not, and there's not enough to hit the three and then council members are recusing themselves, what happens there?
Um if there are not enough people to vote, Mayor, uh like, let's say, out of the five council members, three of them are recused, have been recused. Um then you couldn't pass that matter because you wouldn't, you would, you have to have a minimum number to pass any vote.
I think if anything, just, uh, Mr. Mayor, what I was, what I recommend is if there's something like that, then we can just put a staff report that just illustrates that that person received, you know, uh a contribution uh in the past or whatever the case may be. So it's, I mean, it's all full of transparency anyways, because these are all being uh, you know, reported uh.
Yeah, so I'm just thinking ahead because I know, you know, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll all know where you took the money from. There's four sixty forms, but you know, that a lot of people from voting in the past. So just thinking ahead, if there's, if there's five, you know, there's, there's an RFP out and everybody, and there's only one who's been here for a long time and everybody else is new, and then that person gets the votes, then it's it's going to give an appearance, right? So that was, that's my concern. If the council doesn't want to do the recusal, that's fine. Um but I just thought I'd bring that up. So we we've talked, we've touched on the fines and I think we touched, uh last time we talked about the potential of doing um uh fundraising uh season. And then, Robert, did you look into that?
Um, yes, so I did. Uh I I did put some language in that um related to uh the fundraising season. Um let me see where it is here. It's under section four zero point oh three. No candidate officer, office holder, the control committee of such person or primarily form committee will make any contribution or independent expenditure in a municipal election uh except between eighteen months prior to an election and December thirty first immediately following the election as defined in four zero point oh two H, where the candidate or office holder who is in the beneficiary of the contribution or independent expenditure is on the ballot.
Right.
And and I think that um uh related to the Alhambra ordinance that you had uh or that the council had uh directed me towards.
Great. And so so you put, so what's, what's the period?
So no candidate contribution shall accept any contribution except between eighteen months prior to an election and December thirty first immediately following an election.
So I I would maybe switch it up. And then because that, once, once the election is over, a lot of people have to uh a lot of people have to uh fundraise to pay off the debt. So instead of eighteen months prior, you said eighteen months prior?
Yes, sir. And and December thirty first immediately following. So after an election in November, you would have till December thirty first to, you know, do additional fundraising or, you know, you can make it January or February, whenever you wanted, but that, that's what I, that's the 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 window, the the window I inserted for you.
Okay, can we do, can we do, yeah.
I i- i- if I may, it's just regarding this particular item. Um i- and I'm fine with that. Uh, Robert, just out of curiosity, uh you have in that same section up on top, uh and I think we may have to clear this, is it says uh campaign contributions may only be solicited from October, the year before an election through February of the year following an election. To me, that contradicts what you just wrote through December thirty first. So do we want to, Mr. Mayor, as you were talking about extending it, do we want to just follow what it says up above through February of the following year of the election?
Yes, right now. Yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, I I just wanted to point that out because I, there was, at least I I saw that as a, as an item.
Yes, I I I think, I think what you're correct. So if you want to change the time period, you can keep it, you know, from October the year before. So that would make it what? Um uh thirteen months? That would make it thirteen months because it's in November, October, November. So that'd be thirteen months. And through February, the following year. So that'd be from November then till February, the following year. Then I'll take out the other language related to the eighteen months and December thirty first. Is that how? then I'll take out the other language related to the eighteen months and December thirty first, is that how you would like to do it?
Yeah, that's actually what I was gonna recommend, just that it's.
Okay, okay, so um, uh, for uh, purposes of the record, uh, the paragraph in section four zero point O three, starting with no candidate or office holder, the control committee of such a person or a primarily formed committee, which will make any contribution or independent expenditure in a municipal election as defined in forty point O two H, shall accept any contribution except between eighteen months prior to the election and December thirty first immediately following an election as defined in four zero point O two H, where the candidate office holder who is the beneficiary of the contribution or independent expenditure is on the ballot. That paragraph is now deleted for purposes of the record, and uh, we will keep in the paragraph, campaign contributions may only be solicited from October the year before an election through February of the year following an election, so that will now be your window.
Great.
Okay?
Okay, and then.
And of, and of course, we also have the addition at uh, uh, the two changes we made is that one and then section four zero point one five as identified by um, Mayor Protem, uh, Damian.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, I have additional questions when you are done.
Yes, go ahead.
Oh, thank you, uh, Robert, just for clarification here?
Yes.
Uh, I, sorry, there's no page number, so I just got to scroll up here, sorry about that, um.
Okay.
There was. I'll, I'll get to the, I'll get, oh, there was a transfer of amounts of five thousand dollars from uh, from the campaign from one election to be able to move to the next election cycle?
Yes.
Uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought the current campaign limit uh, that, that we have uh, at the state level for local elections is forty nine hundred, not five thousand.
Uh, that is correct, that, that's just talking about, let, not one donation, but let's say you have money left over in your campaign, you're allowed to transfer five thousand of that uh, over, so that, so that is not, you know, doesn't relate to the forty nine hundred dollar limit, because that deal, yeah.
Perfect, and then the other item, just for clarification for Elise, as, as I'm trying to understand this here, uh, under loans, under section four zero uh, dot one one, under the loans?
Yes.
The second page there, uh, during, uh, under D, uh, you have ten thousand dollars, does, I, I thought in the past you said there was no, there was a, a limit of only forty nine hundred uh, based on the uh, contribution limits that we have through the state, is that not, is that still, is that different?
No, the, I checked that with Sean McMorris, uh, council member, and I, I was incorrect in that earlier statement, so um, there, there is uh, uh, ten thousand is uh, allowed, and, and that also is uh, in some other city ordinances as well, but Sean uh, corrected me on that.
Got it, and when you say shall personally make loans, is that uh, is that, because I, as you, as you talk about loans up on top, it talks about uh, you know, a uh, you know, a commercial entity making a loan. Uh, is that a, just for clarification here, and for, and if we have to, is that a loan, like, uh, should a candidate write themselves a personal check to their campaign, is that what that means?
That is, that, that is one way to make a loan, but it also talks about, um, you know, if you're getting a loan from a commercial institution, um, so you're not using your own money, you're getting a loan from some bank to then loan yourself, so those are two different loans.
Okay, just wanted to make sure, and that's how it reads, I just wanted to make sure because uh, I was just a bit confused, but thank you very much, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no, no more questions.
Great, thank you. Uh, great, so I believe that uh, we've added all of these stuff, so one of the other things is uh, protecting the, protecting this and then uh, potentially putting a clause in there that uh, states any amendments to the ordinance uh, shall not act to weaken the ordinance or act in a manner that is counter to the spirit and or purpose and intent of the ordinance. Or uh, there's a clause stating that amendment or repeal of any portion of the ordinance except mandated by a court of law shall require unanimous vote from the mayor and council, or a fifth, a forfeits vote, uh, you know, exceptions for any amendments that are clerical, uh, or act for, for the clarify clauses in the ordinance, um, or we can do something where uh, you know, the only way to repeal it would be on the ballot, uh, that's a little concerning, and it's a little serious and it would cost us a lot of money, um, so I, I think that if we can get a forfeits uh, with the language that states that the ordinance uh, shall uh, any amendment shall not act to weaken the ordinance or act in a manner that is counter to the spirit and or purpose and intent of the ordinance, and that should be changed uh, by a forfeits vote of the council.
Um, that's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry, Mayor, I, I don't think, uh, I don't think that was mentioned at the last time, so I don't think I have that language in here.
Yeah, so that was one of the things that I just, um, it, it kind of came on after, I thought about, you know, I, I want to make sure that we not only pass this, but that we put it up to the uh, voters uh, to vote on it, and then if the voters, you know, pass it, then that means that the community has fully supported it, so we want to make sure that uh, document like this isn't something that we take this time on and then, you know, it can be changed in, in a matter of thirty days, right, so, um, I, I think a clause like that is uh, uh, vital to something like this.
Okay, and do, do you have language, Mr. Mayor, do you want me to bring language and bring it back, or how do you want me to handle that?
Uh, can you just add the language, I, I don't think I have language for it, I have a clause that states any amendments to the ordinance shall not act to weaken the ordinance or act in a manner that is counter to the spirit and or purpose and intent of the ordinance, and then just to double check, we do have a uh, purpose and intent on the ordinance?
Um. We have not defined purpose and intent, um, but I think uh, uh, I don't think you need to define purpose and intent, I think we can still use that language.
Okay, should we define purpose and intent just to be uh, just to be, you know, secure and then everybody, everything that we need is on that paper itself?
Okay, so, um.
Los Angeles has something like, the purpose of the section is to encourage a broader participation in the political process and to avoid corruption or the appearance of corruption in city decision-making and to protect the integrity of the city's procurement and contract processes by placing limits on the amount any person may contribute or otherwise costs be available to candidates for the election of, to the offices of mayor, city, well, we don't have a city attorney, uh, so city council, city clerk, and promote accountability to the public by requiring disclosure of campaign activities and imposing other campaign restrictions.
Mr. Mayor, did you, do you mention, I may have missed it, but did you mention treasure also, or no?
No, we can add treasure in there though, yeah.
Yeah, I think you forgot, because this applies to those, to that receipt too.
Sorry.
So I, I, I do have purpose and intent under the whereas, but let's add the uh, let's add the language that you just uh, enunciated under uh, definition, section four zero point O two, and that will be um, M, M, is now, uh, so four zero point O two M is now purpose and uh, the lo- language that you just enunciated, is that okay, Mayor?
That's fine, and then, and then we can put that clause in there that states, um, you know, that any amendments to the ordinance uh, shall not act to weaken it.
Yes, and so that clause, um, I would like for the right, purpose of the record to be section four zero point one six.
Great, and then uh, right next to it, there would be a uh, clause stating that an amendment or repeal of any portion of the ordinance uh, except mandated by a court of law shall require a unanimous vote of the mayor and council?
Unanimous, I thought we just said three fourths.
Four fifths, four fifths.
Okay, four fifths. Okay. So that's all part of section four zero point one six now, is that correct, Mayor?
Yes, that is correct, and I, I believe we uh, we already uh, touched on it by saying any, you know, we don't have to say, and it uh, it doesn't in any way diminish or decrease the stringency of the ordinances, but I think we kind of touched on it on the first portion, correct?
Yes, that, yes, that's the first portion of four zero point one six that you read out.
Great, so I think that's it, uh-huh.
Okay, and do you want us to sort of, you know, retype all this up and, and bring it back, you just want to incorporate it right now?
I would just incorporate it right now.
Okay, so we'll incorporate it right now under section four zero point one five and section four zero point one six, and then uh, um, and, and four zero one five being the statute of limitations, section four zero point one six being the, the language regarding purpose and intent and, and the forfeits vote, and then uh, uh, if the council wishes at this point, they could pass uh, the uh, ordinance as amended uh, on, by reading title only on first reading.
Great, so I will make a motion to pass the ordinance as amended, uh, and that is a consideration of this ordinance, uh, where's the title reading?
Order to the City Council of the City of Ball Park, establishing campaign contribution limits and penalties.
Yes, so it is the purpose of the intent of the city council to this ordinance to establish orderly political forum in which individuals and groups may express themselves effectively. Uh, so I'll make a motion to pass consideration of ordinance of the City of Ball Park to establish campaign contribution limits and penalties in Ball Park uh, with the added amendments, uh, can I get a second?
Second.
City clerk, can I get a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Hernandez.
Motion.
So Mayor, really quick, will be, will we be adding this to the ballot in November as well, or no?
I would think that that would be the best way, just so that uh, constituents get to vote on it and, and have their say.
So do we have to give direction for that?
I think, I think I gave it at the last one, but we can give direction, and then uh, so we can, for chief deputy city clerk and, and city staff, they can plan to have this on the uh, election for November. Um, and then, and then we still have a couple of, we still have a couple of months, if we decide that anything has to be changed before then, we can do so and and continue looking at it, but I just thought it was important that we pass it now so that uh, we're transparent about it and that everybody has that fair chance at knowing at the beginning of the year that elections are changing in the City of Ball Park.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, before we put it on the ballot, can I just ask staff uh, before they do that to bring a report back to us um, on what that cost might be to the city, because sometimes putting items on a ballot uh, can significantly range anywhere from uh, several hundred thousand dollars to quite a bit, so I don't know actually what it costs us to put an item on the ballot, but if we could just get a report back before we uh, move forward on that, that, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah, of course, and I think uh, chief deputy will have a, should be able to get us a breakdown of that.
Yes, we'll do, I can do an internal memo and provide you the cost estimate, um, I can't say it top of my head, um, you know, because this is a, a general election that was scheduled, placing um, a ballot, one ballot versus five isn't very significant, um, you know, it'll range from, it'll be like a five thousand dollar difference, but I will bring that forward um, via my more staff report, however you'd like to.
If you could just bring it um, as a staff report, but uh, make it available for the whole pu- for the whole public?
Well.
Thank you.
Great. Great, so that concludes our reports of officers, and then we have a uh, I only have another meeting, but in the meantime, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Protem, would you like to give us your uh, request?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, so, I was looking at the uh, special events calendar, and I know that we probably have our annual parade in November. So I was, I wanted to request that we move our annual parade from November to December. I was looking at some dates with Manny, and we were thinking of December third, so my initial thought behind this was doing a Christmas parade. Um, I wanted to do it at night, you know, so it's, you know, you got the lights, kind of get the community more out, more involved. However, because it's, you know, within this year, we may be competing with other night events, so maybe we can do it during the day, December third, and combining it with a brunch with Santa instead of having breakfast with Santa, was kind of the idea. Um, and I think that, you know, we just need to make it a twi- you know, bring a twist to it, you know, make it, make it a Christmas parade, get the community involved, I think that if we change gears this way and maybe next year, hopefully we can convert it into a night parade, I think it'll bring a lot of our residents out to enjoy, enjoy the parade, I mean, our anniversary as a city incorporated isn't till January anyway, so it doesn't really make much of a difference if we keep it in November or December. I just think that maybe we can give it more of a Christmas feel um, and get the community more out uh, involved with this parade.
I like that idea, Councilmember Damian, and especially we move it to the night parade, I've attended the Covina Night Parade and it's very well attended, so it's a great idea.
Okay, that's nice, yeah, who knows, maybe if we keep doing the posada, we could even incorporate that or we can do something. Um, we just have to look into it, but I think that's a good idea, it makes more sense, we have more uh, spirit and more things to do in, in December.
Our socalo should be completed and, so yeah, that sounds great, we can.
Eventually, eventually.
We can do it there.
Eventually, I'm thinking of, you know, telling Manny, eventually, not this year, but maybe hopefully next year, is bringing it on to Main Street and kind of give it more of that home downtown feel, bring the parade down Main, leading it to the socalo, kind of, you know, ending it with Santa and stuff like that, I think it's going to give it more of a something that we really haven't had in the city for, for a very long time that I can remember. Uh, but I think that if we all are in consensus, we can give Manny direction to start uh, looking into putting that in place.
Mayor, Mayor Protem, if I may, um, it'd be great if we can do the evening one this year if possible, um, I don't know if there's already, if, you know, staff could reach out to our neighbors, um, well, honest, you know, this is for our residents, right, uh, so I think we have enough of a draw here in our city if we were to do it on uh, on the same night of another, you know, maybe not the adjacent city, but few cities over, um, and maybe that uh, may allow us some additional resources for us to do it that, and uh, on the evening instead of a daytime.
Yeah, I think that would be great, I think Manny's still uh, looking into that, I mean, it's, he's looking at potential dates. We really don't want to make sure, we want to make sure that we're able to get the bands and whatever attractions we're going to bring to our parade. I know Covina has theirs December third at night, so it may be competing with Covina's, you know, depending if we can get the, Manny, if you want to take it, take it from here and kind of give us an explanation as to what it entails?
Sure, thank you very much, Mayor Protem, my uh, pleasure to elaborate a little bit more on our uh, annual parade, staff has been working on this for the past few days looking into which days we could uh, accommodate a nighttime parade. We checked with the governing board uh, that uh, works with the bands, and uh, there are various parades uh, throughout Southern California, uh, as Mayor Protem met, mentioned, uh, City of Covina does have, they have their nighttime parade uh, on December third, which is the first Saturday in uh, December, so uh, not sure if the city council would like to schedule our parade on the same evening, it might be a little challenging uh, because a lot of uh, they have an established event, um, and uh, it may, it might be a little challenging to have the bands participate in our parade. Uh, what, what we have been instructed by the governing agency that oversees the bands, if we had ours in the morning uh, on December third, that some bands may participate in the AM parade, say the ten AM parade, uh, and then we would have the awards at about two PM, and then from there, they would travel next door to the City of Covina to have the PM parade, which I believe starts at six PM. So that might be a nice fit, but I, I do see the council's wishes uh, to have a parade in the eve- evening. We looked at the calendar and there are some large parades, not only Covina, but if we push it back a few weeks, and then we uh, run into the holiday break and vacation for the kids uh, that, that are school age kids in high school. So I honestly think the December third AM would probably be our best option at this point. We could reevaluate it and possibly move it to a December third or first Saturday in December PM later on down the road.
Uh, Manny, if I may?
Ye- yes.
Yes, and you made a uh, great point, the bands, uh, they actually start booking um, their parades ahead of time, so.
Yes.
Uh, the likelihood of us getting bands, which is the biggest showcase when you go to parade, of course, it's going to be harder because they've already established the parades that they go to on a yearly basis. And um, going from one parade to the other, it's doable, um, they, I've, I've known of many bands that have done that, they do a morning parade and or a field show at night, but it just combines, so they're, they're ready for that, they know how to go from one uh, from one event to the other, so for it being the first year, I think we would, for it to be successful and have a good turnout of bands, um, we would have to do it in the day so it doesn't clash with the rest of the city's, the other city's schedule. I think it's a good idea for now, but eventually I would like it in the evening too, it would, it would be uh, more appropriate for the Christmas parade, but for the day, I, I, I don't mind that.
Okay, very good, thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Great, so thank you for that, so at this moment, uh, sorry, at this moment, we are uh, at the Ball Park Housing Authority Virtual Regular Meeting.
I just had one more last thing, Mayor, sorry about that, uh, because I was reviewing the uh, like I said, the events uh, budget, and I did notice that we don't have our downtown street market approved here. Um, so I wanted to direct staff to present a. Um, so I wanted to direct staff to present a proposed budget. Uh, for the downtown street market to bring back to the March second city council meeting. Because we're already going to be in March and the street market starts around June, July, after the concerts at the park. So we have to pass that. Um, that budget, so if we can give staff direction to bring that proposed budget to the March second meeting. So that we can approve the downtown street market.
Did we approve the concerts in the park? I don't have that in front of me.
I do not recall specifically, but, uh, it is a traditional event. The concerts and the park, uh, will start on June thirtieth, so we will have one event. On, in this fiscal year, and we'll have eleven more events in the new fiscal year.
Okay, you know what? I don't see the, uh, I don't see the concerts either, Manny, so I don't know. Do you guys include them within the same budget or are they two separate budgets for the concerts on the downtown?
There, usually, uh, we include them annually. Maybe when we put together this last budget, it was. Deleted because of COVID, so I, I'd have to double check on, on that specifically.
So let's put it on there as well if it's not.
Yeah, so let's bring back a, a, a proposed budget for both the, the concerts at the park and the downtown street market so that we can, uh. Bring it to the next council meeting and then, you know, approval of that, so we can get that going.
And, and I'm sure by then we'll have enough staff, Manny.
Yes, we, yes.
Okay.
Okay. So we are at the virtual regular meeting for Housing Authority. And there's a consent calendar, so I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second?
That good.
And then the Finance Authority Virtual Regular Meeting, we do have a consent calendar, and I will make a motion to pass that, uh, consent calendar. Oh, sorry, so there's a motion. So city clerk, can you, can you do the roll call, please?
Okay, this is for the housing, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great, thank you for that. And now we have the Ballin Park Finance Authority, and I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second?
Second.
Uh, city clerk, roll call, please.
Thank you. Mayor Estrada?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Damian?
Yes.
Councilmember Avila?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And then I had just have one question for Sam. Hey, Sam. The, the bridge that connects, uh, Ballin Park to Kaiser, is that, is that city property or is that a? Is that, uh, Caltrans?
So it's Caltrans owned, city maintained.
Very nice. Uh, and then, do we have any, do we have any plans to put any, uh, wayfinders there?
Uh, no, uh, we do not at the moment.
Can we explore the possibility of putting something near that bridge? I think that, that's like one of the biggest entrances, especially because of freeways and then the Kaiser. Um, you know, it'd be nice, I think it'd be really nice to pay homage to the original Ballin Park sign. That used to hang here in the downtown a hundred years ago. So maybe we can explore something to put there.
Absolutely, yes. We can, we can take, uh, uh, incidentally, uh, we did try this a, a few years ago to, to, um. Put in a, a entry sign that said City of Ballin Park on, on the bridge. Uh, didn't go very far, but we'll, we'll, um. Reconnect with Caltrans and start up the conversation again.
Yeah, or maybe we could even just put it on, on city property if it, if it meets, you know, the, if it meets, if it's a good spot or something. To explore. Great, thank you. Uh, so at this moment, we are not adjourning, but we are recessing back into closed session. So I will see, uh, council members and staff, and then I will say goodnight to everybody.
Thank you.
Goodnight, Mayor. Goodnight.
Goodnight, everyone.